Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children and Families Services Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and requires standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I will now commence the roll call for the minute. I would ask that members confirm their presence when I call their name. Convener.
I'm here.
Apologies have been received for councillor Alexander. Councillor Anderson.
I'm here. Good evening.
Lord Profess Campbell.
Present.
Deputy Lord Profess Cordell.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Natclaw.
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Len.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Hello, I'm here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Toulend.
Yeah, here, hiya.
Apologies have been received for Bailey Keenan.
I'm here.
Oh, thank you, Bailey Keenan. Councillor Crookshank.
I'm here.
Okay. Councillor Finnegan.
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone. There's apologies then. Thank you. Both received apologies for councillor Malone. Councillor Scullen.
Evening, present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Apologies have been received for Bailey MacPherson. Councillor Coleman.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Creighton.
Evening.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Mrs McBean.
Sorry, I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs Leick.
Present.
Apologies have been received for Mr Abu Bakr. Mr Batstar.
Evening, Arlene.
Miss Barkley.
Hello, I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs Javid. Mrs Javid. I'll note the absence. Mr Anderson McGinnis.
Present.
And Miss Cox. I'll note the absence. And that concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. Can you just take us through the business, please?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Can I ask if any members have any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Okay, I'm not seeing any indications, so I'll take it there's no declaration. Okay, can we move on, Elaine?
Thank you, convener. Item two, progress, senior fees leavers update. You have the report before you.
Okay, so this is the latest update on our senior phase leavers update. Councillor Coleman, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Mr Convener. I have a question about the positive destinations information on page seven of table five. Although the city is marginally, very marginally behind its spiritual comparator and national performance, it is very reassuring that well over ninety percent of our school leavers go on to positive destinations. My question though is that just over six percent of our pupils in twenty one twenty two did not go into positive destinations. And just seeking reassurances from officers that every effort is made to keep track of these former pupils and engage with them to ensure that every chance is taken to offer them the possible opportunities, be that college or apprenticeships or other positive destinations.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll pass over to Mrs May to make a start, but I think she might pass on to other officers, but Mrs May, I'll start with yourself.
Yeah, happy to give that the assurance and I will ask our head of education, Mr Fleming, to come in with some detail around the work that's ongoing there. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. And thank you councillor Coleman for the question. Just to echo Audrey's reassurance and although it is a slight increase on the year before, it is a significant priority for us as a council, certainly in the children and family service, but also we work very closely with our partners in city development to make sure that we track these young people and that we support them on an ongoing way, but as well as that to improve the percentage further. So we do have a task and finish group working with partners such as Skills Development Scotland, Fourth Alley College and others to further increase the amount of young people that go into positive destinations when they leave school, but then sustain positive destinations thereafter. Happy to provide further detail with the meeting if you require anything further.
Thank you.
You happy with that, councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convener, thank you.
So I have councillor Shears next in the chat, then councillor Crookshank put her hand up after that before councillor Short, so I'll go to councillor Shears first.
Thank you. It's also on positive destinations. It's relating to care experience leavers. We did have one hundred percent at the last set and it's now down, dropped a little bit lower to eighty three point three three. I was just wondering if we could get some detail on what's been done to try and bump that number back up so we're ensuring none of our care experience leavers are slipping through the net.
Okay, I'll pass back to Mrs May again, but I think she might then just pass on to Mr Fleming, but Mrs May, I'll start off with you.
No, happy, happy just to remind our committee that these are very small numbers. So even a couple of young people, you know, would make a huge difference to the percentages. So in total this year, I think we've just got twelve leavers that we're referring to in this data. So yeah, I really just don't want to hand over to Paul again because he would probably just be repeating what we said, that we've got a real focus on this for all our young people with a particular focus around enhanced transitions. We give for our care experienced young people and absolutely continue to work beyond the school leaving stage. If our young people go into a positive destination but don't sustain it, we're working really closely with our partners in the college and schools development Scotland and our colleagues in city development, as has already been said, around economic development and participation group. So there's a lot of work going on to continue to really capture, you know, our own understanding of where all our young people go and we continue to work at that. But as I say, with the small numbers, it could look like there's a huge swing in the percentage, but that could represent just a couple of young people. And it may well be that we do know the story of where they are. We know where they are, but they're not in a positive destination. And sometimes that's around health or the justice system, but we could give you more details if you need that as well. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Shears, are you happy with our response?
Happy with that, thank you.
Okay, councillor Crookshank, you're next.
Thank you, convener. Turning to pages three and four, if my reading of this is correct, I note from the report that the attainment gap at SQ, SCQF level four is roughly ten percent. Haven't hovered around that figure for about the last five years. The gap with SCQF level five, however, is twice as wide. The report states the council today to close the gap with good intentions alone, do not be better outcome. Our efforts at the moment are barely helpless and stand still. If a teacher was marking this report, they'd probably say good, but needs work. Can officers please outline what specifically the council will be doing differently to make a positive dent in these figures? And what tangible steps are being taken to help pupils reach their potential and to support staff in getting them there? For instance, on page eleven, the report mentions bespoke support individual schools. But what form would this take? Can officers shed any light on where we standard terms of staff capacity to deliver on the new strategic activities in addition to the work that teachers are already doing in the classroom and everywhere? And I'd further note that the data in the report is just a snapshot from the past five years. Can officers perhaps provide councillors with long-term data trends? In particular, how performance has tracked pre and post curriculum of excellence being introduced? Thank you.
Okay, again, I'll pass over to Mrs May to start and she might pass on to other officers as necessary, but Mrs May, I'll pass over to you first of all.
I suppose I might want to start at the end of that and actually just have to take advice from some of our statisticians around how much data we do have pre and post curriculum threats, because that is going back some time now, but we could certainly look at that and take that offline for you councillor Crookshank. So thanks for the question and there's a whole level of different answers in there that I think our head of education would be better placed to give you some detail around. And again, we could give you more information beyond committee. Paul, would you like to come in with that? Thank you, convener.
Thanks, Audrey. Thank you very much. Councillor Crookshank, obviously quite a lot in there. And so if I don't answer them fully, of course, I'm happy to provide further detail either tonight or indeed with the committee. You're right, there's a stubborn gap as outlined on page three and outlined on page four. And there is in Dundee as there is nationally. The gap that you refer to at approximately ten percent is a gap that we want to see closing and it has been stubbornly around there, but closing slightly. We're pleased that it's four percent less than it is in our similar local authorities under VC. And you know that we've reduced that gap in Dundee further than others have, but we obviously work to do as you reference. And with SCQF level five, whilst the gap is much more significant, again, we're pleased that it's over three percent less than it is in our virtual comparators. But you're right, there's always work to do. We want to continue to improve. Senior phase attainment is the culmination of a child's journey through life in Dundee, not just in education. So we're working very closely with all our partners to get that right. And it's not just a bit second schools, it's what happens in preschool and at school and all the way through. So that's why I prefaced that, because there's a lot of things that we could talk about. And we are working very closely, Julie's on the call, with our pedagogy team to ensure that we have high quality learning and teaching. We invited colleagues from other local authorities, some similar local authorities and some very different as well, as well as colleagues from Education Scotland to come and to dig in very closely with us, what's working, what's not working well, to help inform this new strategic action plan and working very, very closely with others to implement that. What I would also say as well, when it goes to the next steps section, I think what's really, really important is, as you say, it's using that data to see where things are working well and through our every Dundee learner matter projects to share that excellent practice across the city. We firmly believe we've got lots of skills, lots of excellence in the city. We want to share that. But I referenced the collaborative improvement. We're inviting colleagues from Mades and Education Scotland because not only do we not want to look inward and forwards, but we want to look outwards as well to see where the excellent practice is. In terms of the data, I do think it's really important to go, we should use the data to compare ourselves to our virtual comparators on a yearly basis. We should use the data to compare a child's journey over time, but we need to urge caution in terms of comparing the data just in itself year on year because of the changes to exam systems and also due to other factors such as COVID. But yes, some positive signs in terms of the trajectory, but obviously work to do. And I'm happy to provide any further detail around any of these projects or indeed strategic initiatives that you referenced, councillor Crookshank. Should you like more detail, but I'm conscious and I'll stop there and see if there's anything you want to come back on just now.
Okay, councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy with the response and I'll be happy to receive any further information when it becomes available. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for your question. Councillor Short.
Thank you, convener. I was wandering up from Stow's Well back home this afternoon and I got dragged into Cairns and Carate, not for the first time. And the Morgan Stags were in there again today. And that's the cohort that had that transition during COVID. Paul, you just mentioned the C word and I think, you know, that cohort of young people in three years' time, we're going to be sitting looking at those figures for them. So I just wanted to compliment the fact that, you know, that's just me coming home on one day, but also those sitting on the board of ACD, that cohorts from other schools are doing specific things with those year threes that are coming through because they've had a very different experience to many of the previous experiences. So I just wanted to kind of thank that partnership working that's across the city. Because sometimes for a lot of our parents, it's not necessarily about what you learn in the classroom, but it's about that bigger, wider learning of the city and of themselves. And they can do that outside the sort of the school environment. And I think especially appropriate for those who have had such a difficult start to their secondary career. So thank you so much for that. Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments, councillor Short. You know, I don't always like to use personal experience, but you know, as a parent of one of those children in that cohort, and I do understand how difficult it has been for that, those young people who went through that. So all that work is really important as well. I don't know, Mrs May, if there's anything that you want to add to that?
No, just to, thanks, convener, just to repeat that. Thank you to councillor Short for just highlighting one piece of work that's done in partnership with others in the wider community and just how much our schools do look out into that wider community for partners who can help our young people. Because as you say, all learning doesn't happen in a classroom and certainly all achievement doesn't happen in a classroom. Just now, this report is very focused on senior phase attainment, but there's so much more that we could celebrate about our young people's achievements in that wider sense and their learning in different contexts. And I'm delighted that we've got head teachers who do look outwards into the community for different partnerships and are very sensitive to the fact that our young people who missed out on transition big style just need that additional support to get through and settled into, you know, a settled pathway onto qualifications hopefully as well. But using different vehicles to help them to be, you know, back into school in a way that they want to be there and they're settled there and they're ready to learn. So it's just appreciative to hear your words of appreciation for just one school. But I can assure you that kind of work is going on across the board. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you for those words. With that, I don't see anybody else wishing to comment. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody saying otherwise. Elaine, can we move on to the next item, please?
Item three, closure of law nursery, outcome of formal consultation. You have the report before you.
Yes, as Elaine says, we have the report before us. Does anybody have anything they wish to ask on this report or any comments? No, nobody coming in. So with that, can that report be agreed? Yep. And with that, I believe that's children and families. So thank you all for attending this evening. Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Development Committee. I see someone's got their hand up. Nope, they've gone. Just Elaine, can we just move on with the business, please?
Thank you, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Can I ask if any members have any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Councillor Creighton, I see you put the declaration.
Yep, thank you, convener. On item six, a close family member has written the report, so I shan't comment or vote on item.
Okay, thank you very much for that and it'll be noted. Anyone else? I don't see. So we'll just move on, Elaine, please.
Thank you. Item two, Dundee City Council, Dens Park and Tannadice Park area Dundee, eventually to traffic management scheme order 2023. You are asked to make the order.
Yes, an order's already been approved and I'm just looking to authorize the further completion of the order as it stands following the recent consultation. I don't see any questions or comments, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item three, new roads, roads construction consents. This is for notang.
Again, just a list of new roads consents, just looking for approval. Bailey Keenan, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the revenue costs and it's suggesting that in one case, one of these costs would be ninety thousand per annum. Can I be told how many years that we're expected to pay that?
Yep, Mr McNaughton, are you there, please?
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, Bailey Keenan. The revenue costs are built off a life cycle. And again, it takes into account cyclical annual revenue costs associated with things like street lighting, energy costs, gully cleaning, these types of things. And then also the predominant element of the cost is the asset management. So again, resurfacing at a frequency of twenty years, reconstruction at forty years and so forth. So again, these are the design standards for new roads. They're more frequent in terms of intervention rates than what we or any other local authority or national operator actually deploys on the roads. However, again, that's the basis for the RCC revenue cost calculation. So in terms of the costs, we wouldn't actually be seeing anything other than annual cyclical costs for realistically the first many decades. So these sort of higher costs is based off that broader whole life cycle for the costs spread out over the years.
Ninety thousand pound would be equivalent to borrowing about two million pound. Would that be a sort of fair assessment on how the price has worked out? And can I ask how this isn't built in as planning gain, given that some of the houses on this particular site are selling for some three hundred thousand pound or three hundred and fifty thousand pound? It seems a bit unfair that the rest of the council taxpayers can, you know, be at an early stage, expected to stump up for a pretty new development.
Mr McNaughton?
Yeah, certainly. Again, probably worth highlighting that in terms of the actual costs, if you take the example of the site, the mains load one that you identified, that's about a kilometer of roads. Our average expenditure per kilometer of roads is around about fifteen thousand pounds. So again, it's based on a higher cost in terms of the design life of the assets which have been constructed. It's just the way that it's calculated out. So again, we do receive in council tax contributions for these properties, which again goes towards the servicing of a number of council functions, including road maintenance.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I think you had your follow-up, Bailey Keenan, if you need to just move on, if I don't make any further questions.
Looking for a follow-up, Mr Why, officers don't feel.
Sorry, you've already had a follow-up question.
It was part of the question I asked. It was part of the question that I asked.
What particular point, sorry?
I asked the point about whether, why didn't officers build this in to the planning game?
You, can you answer that one? Is that better for somewhere else?
Possibly, Robin, on the director of city development for the planning aspects of it.
Mr Presswood, are you there?
Chair, many thanks. Thank you, Bailey Keenan. The planning developer obligations are governed by both the local development plan and the supplementary guidance on developer contribution. So at the present time, neither of those requires developers to pay to cover off these costs. And as you and us highlighted, obviously across the city, roads are maintained through the general services account funded by council tax. So I think historically that has always been the case. Though I am not certain whether or not we are allowed to charge for roads maintenance through developer obligations, but we're certainly happy to take that away and do a review of what other authorities do. And then potentially through the forthcoming local development plan review, I will consider that with Gregor Hamilton if it's legally possible to do so. We'll obviously bring that back to members as part of that process.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Presswood.
I appreciate an update on that.
You can follow up with Bailey Keenan afterwards. That would be welcome as well. Thank you. I see no other questions or comments, so I'll just take that as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item four, variation of waiting restrictions 2023. This is for approval.
Again, just approval of a few waiting restrictions or parking restrictions within the area. Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, the one on Strathmartin Road, you know, but well, bear in mind because officers spent three and a half thousand pound putting bollards across the street, which effectively done nothing. Somebody came along and removed them. Council aren't going to replace these bollards. And here we are going to again spend some more money achieving, in my opinion, nothing. So why should you expect me to say okay to this, convener?
I probably don't bait a comment because I'm a resident in the area, but I'll pass on to Mr McNaughton.
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, Bailey Keenan. It's borne the need or the desire for improving the amenity in the area. So again, a number of members of the community have expressed dismay is probably an appropriate word for the condition of some of the vehicles which are currently being left there in states of disrepair. Some of them have become prone to vandalism, smashed glass. Parts of other issues as well with the area. So it's an amenity improvement. In terms of the previous work, bollards were put in and again, those were stolen. We're now in a slightly different situation with patrolling for parking enforcement coming into next year with changes in legislation. So we're increasing up parking patrols to cover a wider extent of the city. So we'll actually have the feasibility to do parking ward and patrols of the area. So it's an alternative means of enforcement action that we've now got available or will be coming into available early next year, which is the reason for change of tact.
So you're, yeah, you're built akin for him to me that you'll have the officers available for enforcement in that area. And what was the timescale for that enforcement? Because I just see this as a complete waste of money if there's no any enforcement, absolute waste of money.
Yeah, so just to elaborate on that point, the, again, we'll be updating members later on in the year about the forthcoming footway parking enforcement legislation, which is currently targeted to come in in December this year. So in anticipation for that, we're increasing up parking attendants to be able to cover the outer line areas of the city as well. So we will have rotational enforcement resource available to look at these outline areas.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you for that.
If there's been any enforcement in the area as it stands?
Again, that's a follow-up with another question. Can I just say you heard the follow-up? And I think if you need to follow up, can you go back to Mr McNaughton offline, please? I think any enhancement in the areas is actually welcome, to be completely honest. And I think the residents know the area very well. We're probably welcome something being changed there. So I don't see any other questions. Bailey Wright?
Yeah, I would like to have the answer to that last question.
Well, I think you actually answered it, but I think you actually highlighted the fact there was a briefing and there will be further information coming with regards to enforcement officers later in the year due to the new parking regulations coming into the.
Do we have an actual timeline for that then?
You, just want to repeat that again, please?
Yeah, certainly, absolutely. So in terms of the timeline, it's the implementation is, it's a Scottish government implementation. The current understanding or advice that we've been given is that they're targeting December this year for that coming in. In terms of what enforcement we're currently doing, we do reactive enforcement and we're quite quick at it as well. So if we do receive in reports of anyone parking on double yellow lines, which is the typical one, or zigzag or anything else in the outer line areas, we will respond to that, but we do that on a reactive basis. So this change will mean that we'll be having patrols. So we'll actually be doing non-reactive patrols on top of that as well, so a greater resource to be able to attend and enforce.
You okay, Bailey?
Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Creighton, I see you're wanting to come in. Yeah, I just see you missing the chat.
No worries, no worries, Paul. Thank you, convener. Just a comment, Bailey MacPherson and I have raised the issue of the sightlines on Tolldef Road and Ankrum Road on the junction. And I would just like to take the opportunity to thank officers for the proposal here. It will no doubt help improve not just pedestrians, but also vehicles' safety on the road and at the location. So thank you very much, officers, for that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much for the comments. I'll take them on board. Uh I don't see any other questions or comments, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item five, parking enforcement penalty charge notices. This is for approval.
Again, this item seeks approval to increase the parking enforcement penalty charge notice value following the update of national guidance issued by Scottish ministers. Penalty charge value has been increased, not been increased since two thousand and one. And the proposed increase brings the value in line with inflation and the over intervening period is consistent with the increase being applied by local authorities in Scotland and approved by COSLA. Uh Councillor Duncan, please.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. Just a quick question. Uh the proposed new charges. Just wondering, do do we know yet if um these new rates of charges will apply once the uh the proposed um enforcement of pavement parking comes comes on stream?
Uh Mr McNaughton, would you like to answer that question, please?
Yes, it's a universal charge and it'll be the same charge that will apply.
Yeah, thank you.
That that that's great. I just wondered some quality on that. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Uh I don't see any other questions or comments, so we'll just take that report as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item six, supply of vehicles and plant. This is for approval.
Again, just approval of vehicles for the care park golf course following the recent issues there. Uh Councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you, convenor. Um item four point one explains items are to replace.
Sorry, Dorothy, you've gone on mute. You just have to start it, sorry.
Sorry, I do this all the time. My apologies. Uh item four point one explains that these items um are to replace vehicles following theft. Um I just wondered, were they not covered by insurance?
Ian, would you like to come on that one?
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Thank you for the question. Um Councillor McHugh, the um the insurance um again, similar with large um organisations such as the council, uh we've got a single um uh single incident claim value of a million pounds on our assurance, aggregated to five million pounds over the year. So they're effectively self insured. Um and again, it's um just due to the the nature of the value of our assets. Um so uh in answer to your question, no.
Also, McHugh, you have it? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh you see a comment from Billy Dawson there. Uh no problem. Thank you. Uh Councillor Rome, please.
Uh thank you, convenor. It was just to kind of add on to the comment from Councillor McHugh. I just wonder if Mr McNaughton could elaborate on the security situation now. I'm sure that would provide a bit of reassurance in in terms of uh these vehicles and the site in general.
Thanks for that. Ian?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks very much for the the question. Um it's been described to me as Fort Knox. Um it's uh it it has had two instances, so it's it's at risk of being a targeted site. So because of that, it's got enhanced security. Um so it's got a new CCTV system and new alarm system, new secure shuttered doors, locking systems, new security fencing, new flood lighting. Um uh it's it's got everything you expect of a um very secure facility. Um the the incidents we have had, um again, they were well organised. So these weren't opportunistic um incidents. They were fairly well planned. So because it's a heightened risk due to the uh isolated location, it's got enhanced security at the the site.
Yeah, thanks, Ian. That's very reassuring and the investment we're actually putting into replacing these vehicles again. So thanks for that feedback. Is that okay? Councillor Rome?
Well, thanks. That's excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see any other questions or comments, uh so I'll just take that as agreed. Elaine? Next thing, please.
Item seven, tenders received by head of design and property and head of sustainable transport and roads, and these are for approval.
Uh number of tenders here, as we see, the expenditure in the region of two point six million for construction work and consultancy services across the city. Uh Councillor Crichton, you're first.
Yep, thank you, Convia. Um I'm grateful to officers for progressing the repair of the footbridge uh south of the Hares Academy. It was covered on page eighteen, I think. Yep, eighteen. Um can I ask if the estimated timescales for completion takes into account the need for track possession from network rail? Um as I know, this is required in the case to complete the repair. And the only reason I ask this is if the footbridge was back open uh before the schools returned from the summer holidays in August. Obviously, that'd be welcome for parents and peoples.
I don't see who's on the call who can answer that. Uh Mr Presswood, can you? Oh, sorry, Neil, you're there. Mr Martin, please.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, Councillor Crichton, for the question. In terms of the programme, yeah, officers have developed a programme and it does take account of possessions for the railway. That said, uh what are in their hands and in terms of the the sign off during that will obviously work with them to keep that as tight as possible. So um all things being equal, we'll hopefully adhere to the programme that's detailed in appendix.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Martin. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convenor. Uh it's just a question with the regards to page twenty seven. The 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 forthcoming or proposed works on seven to twenty one Castle Street, uh heating upgrades. Uh I mean, that's expenditure that's getting on for something like half a million pounds. I'm just really wondering uh if 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 officers can give us a bit of detail about the level of occupancy of that property and possibly a bit of insight or reassurance uh as to future or expectations as to occupancy.
Again, Neil, would you like to come back now?
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, uh Councillor Duncan. So in terms of occupancy, there's there there obviously is uh different elements to that in in terms of the tenancy. And like with all properties, um the works that we carry out are on a risk-based approach, life cycle approach in terms of how old the systems are, hence why the works have to be carried out. In terms of occupancy going further, uh further, as you'll be aware in a post pandemic world, um in terms of the council estate and what we utilise, uh that will change over the coming months and probably uh into the medium term as well. So the 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 council uh will be changing in terms of what what we do with with those properties. And again, in terms of our asset management team and the state's management, in terms of leasing and commercial deals, we're always looking for uh marketing of properties and maximising any income. And and again, this makes uh these properties more attractive for utilising that as well going forward.
Councillor Duncan?
Yeah, okay, I'm grateful for that. I mean, it's it's just something you you've kind of alluded to, the, you know, post post pandemic. Um the 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 world that we form where we knew has perhaps changed. And I just wonder how much demand there is going to be seriously for the office space. Um I think it's it's one for us to keep an eye on.
Yeah, certainly is. And I think it's uh the state's team and the maintenance team will be obviously overseeing that within the city development department. So thanks for the comments. I don't see any other questions or comments, so take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Elaine?
That takes us to the confidential item. Would you like to deal with this in the usual way?
I think everyone just happy to go ahead and agree as usual. I don't see again any comments or questions. So yes, we'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. And that's the business for City Development this evening. Thank you. Thank you, convenor. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Thank you. If you could, there's only one item on the agenda after declarations. So can we ask for declarations of interest in the first instance?
Thanks, convenor. So item one, are there any declarations?
Can't see anyone raising their hands, so we'll take that as a no. Um.
Sorry, that takes us on to item two, tenders received by head of housing and construction, and this is for approval.
So this is essentially um a group of contractors, five contractors who submitted cost to supply scaffolding delivery installation services over the next four to five years, one point nine million pounds. We're seeking approval for the acceptance of this tender, these tenders. Does anyone dissent? Can't see anyone dissenting, so I take that as approved. And that's the end of neighbourhood services for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, convenor. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Welcome to the Policy and Resources Committee. Arlene, please.
Thanks, convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. That takes us on to item two, improving services through listening to customers and service users. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this report highlights improvements which have made council services as a result of listening to views of customers and service users over the past year. Highlights from the report grouped under priority themes of the council plan are set out in appendix one. And it is proposed that these are published on the We Listened, We Acted page of the council's website to demonstrate our continued commitment to listening to customers and service users and acting on their feedback. Now, I think, did I see Councillor Crichton's hand? Or was it an optical illusion?
No, that's me. Uh thank you, Con. I welcome the contents of this report and I commend officers, frontline staff and those and other supporting those for the invaluable efforts that they have made. As elected representatives with a remit to scrutinise the work of the council and to drive forward urgent improvement, it can sometimes feel like our attention is disproportionately focused on the negative. But to ignore the positive would be deny, to deny the hard work done by thousands of dedicated Dundonians day in and day out. Of course, our tendency to focus on what could be done differently is very much rooted in our genuine desire to make our place to live, work and study. I therefore like to express my heartfelt thanks to those who deliver such vital services for our citizens every single day and often on very finite resources. Uh also, it's appropriate that this report on what we're doing well is paired with the benchmarking framework, which clearly spells out what we need to do better. There are several areas for improvement which must become our new priorities. And various agencies and personnel must receive the funding and support they need to do this work. Some of the indicators measured in this report show that gradual improvements have been made in recent years, uh though perhaps we could pick up the pace. Many other indicators by contrast appear to show things either getting worse or simply plateauing over the last decade. Coinciding coincided unsurprisingly with the brutal austerity regime uh imposed by government in both Westminster and Hollywood. Uh with the new first minister now in office and with the deputy first minister being one of our city's constituency representatives, can the administration assure us that every effort is being made to present the case for bringing as much funding and resources to Dundee as possible to make good on these priorities? Thank you, convenor.
Well, absolutely. I can provide you with that assurance that this administration works every day in partnership for colleagues in Hollywood to make the city a better place. So thank you for these positive comments. Moving on, please.
Convenor, I've asked the question. I don't know if you saw it.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Duncan.
Ah, that's okay. No worries. Um yeah, it's just really, uh yeah, to welcome a lot of positive things in in into the ports. Uh of course, we all welcome that. But and I mean, I think with all in the business of trying to give improved, you know, customer services to to the residents. And it's really around that. I've got a couple of questions. The first one would be, obviously, the council's recently decided to take the step of um withdrawing the kind of public on-demand public access at Dundee House and housing offices. And um certainly anecdotally, the feedback I've had thus far from residents is kind of say not positive. Uh I've had residents saying that actually they can't get through the council on the telephone to make face to face appointments. So they've had to come to an elected member to do such a basic thing. So my question is really, um can I ask if the meeting facility, you know, the 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 booking facility uh to arrange a meeting is actually being well used? How how is it actually running?
Um Andrea, is that a question for yourself or would that maybe be Jackie?
Um that would be Jackie Capel, convenor.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Thank you, Councillor Duncan. Um yes, um as far as I'm concerned, so far, it it's running fairly well. We've got appointments booked up um over the next week and into the following week. So customers are using the the online booking facility. Um prior to them coming into the appointment, they're getting a telephone call from our customer services staff uh to confirm if we can support them with their online transaction rather than actually coming into the office. But but the online booking facility is being well used.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. It's just, as I say, I've had certainly a couple of residents come on to me as an elected member saying that they're struggling to get through to the council to make such an arrangement. And I suppose my suggestion or thoughts for the council to consider is, would it not be a good idea, given that a lot of people just they don't do online and they struggle with it? Would it not be a good idea to have a couple of regular new appointment needed drop-in sessions twice a week, maybe somewhere?
Jackie?
Yeah, um I I mean, but because we're obviously trying to to reduce the number of staff um that we have in frontline offices, we have opted for an appointment only service um at this moment. I'm not aware of any elected member queries coming via myself regarding customers not being able to get through on the phone um or to make appointments. So if there's anything, you know, if there's specific cases that you would like me to look at, then I'm happy to do so.
That's okay. Certainly will, because I had to contact one of your colleagues last week when, you know, to pass something on to you. So I will do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um that report agreed. Moving on, please.
Item three, local government benchmarking framework performance indicator indicators twenty one to twenty two. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this report advises members about the performance of the city council for financial year twenty one, twenty two as defined by the indicators compiled by the Improvement Service for the Local Government Benchmarking Framework. Also describes council's performance in relation to our family group of comparable authorities. Report shows that fifty percent of indicators met the benchmark of the LGB, LGBF, the family group median. Based on the data set out in the report, this has proposed indicators relating to tariff scores in most deprived areas, payment count, recycling of waste and conditions of operational buildings will be the subject of further discussion by the council leadership team. Examine the data relating to benchmark services, consider improvement actions and follow-up progress. And update an update on these indicators will be included in next year's report. So uh questions, we've got Bailey Keenan first, please.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, convenor. In in relation to page thirty three and household waste recycling. Uh just wondering, you know, what's the sort of target there where have we given up hope until the Scottish government bring in a a a recycle uh scheme or, you know, is there intention to do something? Do we know the areas of the city that are uh that are most affected where potentially um you know, there has been a downturn in in recycling, given that we must know what's collected by route? The other question is in relation to the housing quality standard. And knowing that, you know, there's a there's a reason given that we're having electrical test uh properties, that's going to sort of landlord uh needed, needed to be done by landlords in the private sector for quite a number of years. So why was it a surprise to us in Cockwell having the housing quality standard drop off that we appear to have? And how do we calculate into the housing quality standard the amount of repairs that we are backlogging at the moment? Because that's got to have a negative effect on our tenants and the quality of home that we are providing.
Okay, thanks for these three questions. Um so I'm not sure who's on the call to pick these up. Recycling, electrical testing and um repairs.
Con convenor, Tony Boyle, Tony Boyle's on the call, who could pick up recycling? And Louise is on the call, who could pick up the housing repairs and the standards questions?
Perfect, thanks. Tony, please.
Thanks, Bailey Sors, and thanks, Bailey Keenan. Yeah, we're working on the thirty one actions within the waste and recycling strategy, which gives us assurance we'll meet the targets we need to meet. Obviously, there has been an overall decrease in the recycling rate, actually noted in six of the eight local authority benchmarking uh partners. Uh so we're not alone in this challenge just now. But we're looking at a whole range of issues to support that. So I just want to provide Bailey Keenan with that assurance. Obviously, the timeframe we're talking about when this issue occurred is relating to the pandemic. It's a twenty one, twenty two figures. There was a lot of issues that members will recall at that time around the household waste recycling centres being closed and the food waste collection's been suspended. And this um obviously had a a significant impact on recycling rate. Uh but rest assured, we are working on a whole range of measures to make improvements for the future, convenor.
Thanks for that. And Louise, if you could pick up the housing related questions, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question. Um in terms of the electrical inspections, first and foremost, I'm pleased to say that we've made progress over the past year and managed to get SHQS back up to just over eighty percent since this report um shows in the year previous. So there's been a. since this report, um, shows in the year previous. So there's been a lot of work in terms of catching up. Um, in terms of your question, why this was a surprise? So, and just prior to this being brought in as part of SHQS, this was a piece of work that we were undertaking as part of our plan maintenance programme. But it wasn't a requirement for the five yearly test to be accounted for within the quality standards. And that was when it was then brought in that it had to be undertaken in this timeframe. So there was a piece of work carried out with construction services and subcontractors to get through that backlog, which I'm pleased to say we've made progress showing this year's return and the chart has shown we're back over eighty percent. Um, in terms of your second question, so how do we factor in the backlog, given the repairs that will have outstanding? So what we, we have an asset management database, Bailey Keenan, and what we review every year is not only the guidance around, um, Scotch housing quality standards, but how that then aligns with the asset management information that we've inbuilt within our database. In terms of some of the key indicators such as bathroom replacements, kitchen replacements, they're taken out of the day-to-day part that appears and factored into our plan maintenance works, which ties in to our asset management database and allows us to extrapolate the data that we make as our annual return to the charter.
Okay, I think we'll follow up separately.
That's quite entitled to do so. Yep. Um, councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. On page twenty six of the separate revised report, it appears that Dundee seems to invest less on economic development and tourism of late compared to both the family group median and the Scottish average. Why is this the picture in twenty one, twenty two and what's been done to address this?
Um, is Robyn Presswood still on the call?
Yeah. Um, many thanks, convener, um, councillor, uh, for the question. And the, the key challenge here is that this, uh, includes both capital and revenue spend. And if you look at the chart, uh, on page twenty six, you see very high fluctuations. So in, in some years, you will see very significantly, um, uh, uh, higher investment in Dundee than in the benchmark average and in the, the Scottish figure. Um, but in some years where there isn't a significant capital investment, you see us falling beneath the Scottish average. But I think if you look at the average, um, over that period since two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty two, uh, I think that Dundee generally is above average. Um, at the present time, because there aren't large capital projects on site, uh, we're seeing us falling below, beneath that level. But I think once the next generation of capital projects, including the waterfront, come forward, then we will see ourselves rise again, uh, 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 above the Scottish average again.
Thank you for that, Mr. Presswood.
Okay, and councillor Creighton, please.
Thank you, convener. Uh, Bailey Keenan actually touched on this, but I kind of want to go into a bit more detail on the page thirty three about the recycling. Uh, I looked at the data and it says in the city thirty four point seven percent of total household recycling is, uh, household places recycled. And but zero waste Scotland data reveals that the Scottish government previously targeted sixty percent by twenty twenty with seventy percent by twenty twenty five. Now, just with kind of resources, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Boyle's assurances that they'll do everything they can. But there's almost a thirty percent gap and I'm just wondering how they kind of plan to, uh, action that and, uh, improve going forward.
Mr. Boyle, I'm sure you'll reference the challenges of, um, collecting waste in a city where fifty percent of the properties are tenemental or multi-story.
Absolutely. Thank you, convier. Thank you, um, councillor Creighton. The simple fact of the matter is there isn't one easy answer for this. There's a whole range of competing factors which impact on our ability as a city, um, to recycle to the best of our ability. Bailey Sowers has just mentioned quite rightly that there is a fifty percent communal housing stock within, uh, within Dundee. That's comparable, uh, with, with the other, uh, main cities, you know, Edinburgh, Aberdeen and obviously Glasgow. And it's no coincidence, again, that when you look at Glasgow, for example, it's got a very similar recycling rate to Dundee. We've got a whole range of challenges, but councillor Creighton is pointing towards specifically the sixty percent target. That is subject to some national debate just now in terms of the recent consultations which committee, uh, were made aware of, um, last year in relation to the circular economy and the waste route map to twenty twenty five and beyond. We await the Scottish government coming out with the feedback from those consultations, which will lead to further, uh, enabling legislation, which will look towards spreading responsibility for recycling, not just with local authorities, but as part of the wider extended producer responsibility. Um, raft of legislation that's been coming forward in recent years, most notably recently with the deposit return scheme. This places the emphasis rather than just being specifically with local authorities and spreads the load across, uh, everyone, including particularly the producers. So that sixty percent target that has been there historically for a number of years now is subject to some review and we await further guidance from Scottish government on that, convier.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Yeah, no, that, thanks, thanks for the detailed response, Mr. Boyle. I might pick this up, uh, offline, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, and if these comments, this is approved. Moving on, please.
That takes us on to item four, digital strategy, twenty three to twenty seven, and this is for approval.
So this report presents a twenty three to twenty seven digital strategy for approval. Strategy lights outlines an approach to embedding digital across all that the council does and ensuring that services will work collaboratively to maximise opportunities for emerging digital technologies, new ways of working and doing business. A councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. I'll try to keep my hand away from the on off button for the, my volume this time. I'm happy to approve this strategy. Um, I just want to fly the flag a little for the significant percentage of people who are digitally excluded, uh, specifically older people. Um, I think the number, uh, in that cohort is round about forty percent of older people and are not digitally literate. Um, and, and to ask for some assurance that processes will remain in place, um, for service delivery to that group.
Okay, uh, Jackie?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you, councillor McHugh. Yeah, you can have, um, my assurances, councillor McHugh. Um, well, we're not trying to take away, um, services, um, at all and replace them all with digital. But in order to, to support those that are more vulnerable, um, and those that can use digital services, encourage them to do so, um, so that we can spend more time with those that, that are not as digitally enabled.
Okay, Dorothy's nodding, so I'll take it with these comments. That's approved. So next report, please.
That takes us on to item five, older people's advice service. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this report requests approval to continue funding the older people's advice service run by Dundee CAB from April to March twenty twenty six. So help meet the goals of the advice strategy agreed by committee last year, reducing pensioner poverty and indebtedness through income maximisation, benefit take up and debt advice. Um, now, I think we've got a question from councillor Short.
This is more really a comment, convener, it was to thank you, um, for, um, your help and support in this and also, uh, Jackie and the team, uh, for, uh, working closely with, uh, citizens' advice. And I believe that they've done a wonderful job, but I believe that also that there's still an awful lot of work to do. And many of our older population hear the word benefit and struggle away or say, ah, there's all awful lot more folk are worse off than me. These aren't benefits, these are rewards. These are sometimes passporting that will take on to other things that they might be missing out on. So I would recommend that if we ever come into contact with anyone, and I do it a lot on the bus, um, just chatting to them and just say, look, just get it checked. What's the worst that could happen? Because there is money that sits there not claimed. Uh, and we should be encouraging as many people as possible to pick up that money that the rightly worked really, really hard for. And, and we talk about things like the, the winter of discontent and paying really high levels of, um, taxation. Those were the people that were paying it. So make sure we get the money back to them now because they down well deserve it. Excuse my language. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for these comments. Jackie, could you perhaps pass the thanks of, presuming all members of the committee to the staff who are involved in this?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, and moving on.
Um, that takes us to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
Not seeing any other indications, so I'm taking it this is agreed. And that's the end of the committee and thank you all for your attendance.